Good evening, Jovanosa. Salisbury resident. So first I want to commend the mayor on something specifically because if anybody watches county council meetings, the moment a critical point is made to the county executive, she runs into her office and hides. Literally, you can watch it, so I commend him on that. And I'm not actually going to talk about the mayor specifically. I do want to talk about something that is related, and I'm so glad that the young lady ahead of me made this comment about being civically engaged. Because a big part of this story that unfortunately the local media has sort of missed, that has been downplayed by others, is the fact that this is a dynamic that connects the city and the county. Okay? And one of the big challenges that Salisbury historically has had is the role of a very intrusive county government in some ways, particularly with the position of the county executive. And this decision, my understanding, was a joint decision. I think this is touching the tip of the iceberg about something that is historically important. It's come up in recent days supposedly with the fire service agreement, which is the role, and I would say the very dangerous role, that the county executive of Wycomico County has over the city of Salisbury. It has continually produced problems about inequity on funding, on issues with resource allocation, and it's something that right now is actually creating a constitutional crisis in our county. Tomorrow, the county council is meeting at the civic center to talk about whether or not we should put on the ballot a referendum to abolish the county executive. I strongly encourage you to think about where you stand on that issue, review it, and if you feel that what the county executive is doing in regards to these kinds of issues, that you make your voice heard, because it is interconnected. It's one thing to think of the city as an isolated entity, but unfortunately, we are often at the mercy of what a county executive does or doesn't do in terms of policy. You know, right now, some of our city officials have very good, close, tight relations with the county executive, which has been great in some ways, but the problem with the county executive is a danger to the city, including issues such as this. So I implore you, think about it, try to come out and understand the connection, that what happens in Salisbury happens across the county and vice versa. So thank you for your time. And it appears we have comments virtually as well.
Yes, Tony, if you're there?
Hello, can you all hear me?
Yep.
Hi, so I just, Tony Sampson, I am a fairly new resident of Salisbury. I've only been here about a year and a half. And originally from a southern state, I don't want to talk a lot about my home state too much, but one of the reasons I moved to Salisbury was because my home state was becoming less progressive. I identify as a trans male, and a lot of policies that were coming out, birth start is small, no flags, a book here, a policy there, and then next thing you know, like there's these huge, you know, no D E I offices and all these other things that are being taken away in different states. And it starts with small things like this. And it's really sad because my wife is from Maryland. She's from St. Mary's County and did softball tournaments here in Salisbury and knew the area fairly well. And when we were talking about leaving my home state, which I very much hated doing, I mean, I really did love my home state, but it just wasn't safe anymore. She mentioned Salisbury because it still had that small community feel that, you know, maybe a big town like Baltimore, DC you wouldn't get. And even when I applied to the job that I have now, I applied for a job that I currently have now in July, and I asked my employer, is this a safe community? And funny enough, one of the things they just said was, yeah, it's fairly, I mean, you know, it's safe. And we actually, they just took down the pride flag for the whole month of June. It was up, and they, because I interviewed in July, and they just took it down right before the Fourth of July weekend. And I just want to say I'm very disheartened that a symbol that was used to portray a safe community of Salisbury, Salisbury City, is now being used as a political stance for our new mayor, and it's very disheartening to hear. So I just wanted to say, like, some people say, well, does it even matter? Does this really help people? You got two new taxpayers. My wife and I both moved here, and we do things in the community, and we have done stuff like that. And like I said, that flag was one of the reasons that was sold us that this is a safe community. That's all I wanted to say, and I appreciate your all's time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Michelle?
Hi, thank you. My name is Michelle Schleyoffer, and I apologize, I was not going to make a public comment because I'm actually not a city resident, I'm a county resident, but I wanted to make a couple of points that I think are being overlooked in some of this. I am, I was actually the person who started the P flag chapter. And so I have a lot of history on why the pride flag raising is a P flag event. And really, the reason is because the city wanted to do it, but they wanted P flag to pay for the flag and to organize it. And so if I'm understanding the issues with the constitutional free speech stuff correctly, it seems like this problem could be solved by just having the city decide to do it themselves, right? Like, you don't need to have P flag do it. You could just purchase a flag and do it, right? And that, I think, strips some of the problems with, like, having an approval process and a permitting process. I think Nicole Blackwater's comments were very much on point, as well as Alicia Miller. The symbols that the city puts up or chooses not to put up regarding Pride Month and other cultural and minority groups really does send a strong message. I'm a psychologist, so in my field, we call that the structural determinants of health. We know that these signifiers are significantly related to mental health outcomes, so by choosing not to put these types of symbols up under the guise of neutrality, you are making an active choice to significantly undermine people's mental health. I'm a psychologist, there's lots of data on that, and happy to provide that to you. And I would just, you know, like to point out that this is something that you actually have full control over. You don't need to have P flag, you know, give you a flag or do anything. You could just choose to purchase a flag. And I also noticed that there was no Pride Month proclamation, whereas there's been proclamations for other groups and events. There was also no change to the city's social media, which is a deviation. So I think that these are things that are larger issues that really need to come together and have a consensus about what are the actual values of the city and what do you want to project into our community. Thank you.
Seeing no other public comments, council, any other comments on this?
I just want to say that I like the idea offered by the last commenter, that the city look into purchasing its own flag to get us around the whole process. And we could do that for other months. You know, November is epilepsy awareness month, those sort of things. So there's a number of flags we could fly.
That would be, yes, so, and I think, you know, it's what we're determining about the regulations and, you know, council's role in the city, and, you know, again, for the new, if we're, have the appetite for policy or whatever entertaining, I want us to have a role in that. Because again, I think it's more than just one person determining what the vision is and what the voices are for Salisbury. But right now, that decision is, and I'll segue to you because you're going to start off our administration and council comments, so, but that decision is made by our administrator, or CEO, or mayor of the city, who was elected.
Yeah. Yeah, I just really want to point out, you know, I'm sitting here looking at Suzanne. I've known the guy for 25 years, and, you know, I find it really hard to believe, I mean, I had to make a decision about a flag that was jointly ellened by the county. I think the first thing I did when I found out that we had to do this, I reached out to Allen, and I reached out to Mark, and I said, are they getting the resources you need to make a successful event? Then I reached out to the county for the fourth or fifth time regarding putting up the flag, and there just wasn't, there wasn't the will to do so. And I think one of the things that happened was the mayor, the prior mayor, or the interim mayor at the time, I guess, put that flag up without really the permission of the county. So at the end of the day, we worked to try and get another location, which was great. It worked out great, and so at no point did I ever, ever, put any kind of negative spin on the event or any kind of curtail it in any way, shape. That's not true. It absolutely isn't true. And there's absolutely no evidence of that. So what I'm just saying to you is, will you say louder? Is that what you're saying? I don't know. So absolutely, that's absolutely never on my intent. I think, you know, the reason I brought Suzanne, I mean, you've known me for 25 years. I've never had a moment cross word with her, I've never, people's sexuality is irrelevant to me. I mean, truly. So my point is, I had to make a decision, the mayor of the town. And so that somehow got construed as being negative towards the event, and that's not at all my intention. And, you know, this neutrality can be converted as bigotry. I don't know where that originates from. It's, to me, it's illogical. Anyway, my point is, yeah, well, yeah, again, everybody's entitled to their own opinion, I get it, and I know this is a very, but at the end of the day, that's not my intention. So all I can do is offer you, that is my explanation, and you can question it, undermine it, whatever you want to do, but that's all I can do. Thank you.
Mr. Kit, folks, 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 folks. Thank you. I appreciate, thank you. Mr. Kithrow.
Nothing else tonight, we're already going pretty long.
Okay, thank you. We'll start with you, Councilwoman DeShue.
Just a couple of things I'd like to give a shout out for Rachel Manning, who was here earlier. She is in charge of the Newton Street Community Center, and she does a wonderful job. They just dedicated their third floor to STEM. All these wonderful interactive projects that children can do comes from Cal Ripken's foundation, and she manages it beautifully, and she was here earlier. I wish I could have said it to her face, but hopefully she'll hear about it. Neighborhood walks are still going on, thanks to Rachel again, and we participate as we can up here. There was the Habitat Building Blessing. Molly, if she's still here, does a great job with the Habitat projects. And we just, lots of good things going on. So those are the ones I would like to give a shout out tonight.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Jackson?
Silent. We have nothing to say tonight, but thanks for everybody coming.
Absolutely, and we're glad to have you back here. Again, I'm glad you're in good enough spirits to have you here as well, so thank you. Yes, and we'll wish you well in the future. Councilwoman Gregory?
I just want to thank everybody for coming out tonight. We appreciate you, we see you, we hear you, we support you. Okay? Councilwoman Jackson, I just want to say thank you for coming because I know you've had a rough time the last few weeks, and you're going to have another rough few weeks coming, so.
No doubt.
Best of luck with everything, and you know I'm going to be calling you like, all day, the day after, just to make sure you're okay. Other than that, I just want to put a shout out once again. This will be the last time for, call for buying tickets to the 70th anniversary, it's not easy to say, gala for the Salisbury Zoo. Guys, please buy your tickets, come on out, it's going to be a great time. It's supposed to go from 5:00 to 9:00, and there's lots of stuff, dinner, raffles, auctions, socializing, that sort of thing, so come on out. It's money to a good cause, which is our zoo, and just come on out and support it because it needs our support, so that's it for me.
Certainly. Council Vice President?
I just want to know what half of the flagpole in front of the government building does the city own?
There's multiple flagpoles out there.
I just want to know, the one that has, you know, the, you know, the government flags. I just want to know what half?
We have two flagpoles.
Okay, I just want to know which ones we own, I mean.
Up until last week, our city flag wasn't even on there.
Yeah, I mean.
About that.
Come on, city, let's, let, come on, come on, city.
Up until like two years ago, we didn't own any of it.
Well, you know what, let's, that's not an excuse. Let's beef it up and get the flags going, come on. I just want to know what half, half, so I can put a sticker on it.
Thank you, Councilwoman Vice President. And again, we hear you all, we see you all. Thank you for showing up, thank you for your comments. When you all hurt, I hurt, you know, I tried to, you know, this is during Memorial Day weekend, and that was my, I told everyone, I was like, I'm shutting off my email and everything else, and I was like, all right, and I've read each one of your emails, took some of your calls. I didn't respond to that, of course, because that was my vow to myself to take some time because I've been going strong since I got elected. But I couldn't rest wholly, just knowing that some people were hurting internally and externally. So you know the love I have for Salisbury, and so, and I told some of you all this, I want us to make it right, I want council to do whatever we can do. We've been having conversations and to show our support for our individuals who live here, work here, and play here. So I want you all to feel my hurt that I have for you. Because again, this hurt was us, you know, within the African-American community years ago. It's you all numerous times, and it's you all right now, so thank you all. Like Councilwoman Gregory said, our gala this Saturday for the Salisbury Zoo, I'm excited to go out there. Miss Allen at ABCD, it's got to be a good time, so purchase your tickets, come out there, show your support. I've been to the zoo many times. I told him I want to feed the bear, so he's making that happen. I'm going to get behind there and hang with the bear.
Can we sell tickets to that?
Yo, no.
Where we can watch that?
That might be the fundraiser, yeah.
That's your, that's our fundraiser.
Yeah. And Councilwoman Jackson just reminded me that the library is holding an event this Saturday.
It's the Black History Living Museum. They'll be hosting Saturday at 1:00 PM at the library. So if you can come out, please come out. I'll be representing my father.
Yes, it's a living, living. It's a living museum, awesome program. My aunt is, she works over at the library, she's doing it, so I definitely have to show a face. But special shout out to my cousin, I believe she's 10 years old, and she's participating on her own will. I believe she's Serena Williams, so she plays tennis, so I'm excited for that. I love events like this. And again, we love to see you here, Councilwoman Jackson, we are all with you. We know you'll be, you know, out of commission for just a few months and things, so we appreciate you being here, we love you, and we can't wait to have you back and on my left side here, so.
That's only because I make him late.
She breaks up the tension. Yes, so.
I break up the tension.
So with that, this work session is now adjourned, and we will now convene in a special budget session to discuss the FY25 fees. We'll let you all.
Don't run.
Yeah, yeah.
Don't run, y'all want to stay for this, don't you?
I don't know, what's it for me?
Special, it's, is it not? It's just for the, just the FY25 fees, right? And then we're going to a special meeting to do the other stuff? Okay. Keep me, keep me straight, yeah.
Yes, I've not heard.
Okay, that's fine, I just.
I know Julie's attending, but she scheduled it, so.
Okay.
I saw your email that you had conflicting.
No, like I said, I have not really taken.
So I have, I wear. Leave him open.
Yeah, I think we have to leave it open, it's a public, okay. Can you just? Yeah, we'll let him be the bad guy.
This is him when he was born.
Not for, not for this, for special.
He looks like my other, my other boy.
It's not here. It's a special budget meeting, I don't think we need for that, but for the special meeting, yeah.
Okay, so when he, this is right when he was born. So you see all the hair he had?
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, special budget.
Just, just so we can, before it's midnight?
Yeah.
All right. Mr. Kithrow, do you mind just getting us all on one accord and on track, and then we can, we can ask our questions and hopefully guide the ship?
I am working on pulling it up right now. Yep. Okay, so last time we spoke, we had introduced to you all a modified fee schedule. On that fee schedule had all of the recommended proposed changes to fees. They were highlighted in yellow, some were modifications to fees, some were new, and some were strike throughs, an elimination of a fee. That conversation, I think, was fruitful, but there was still further deliberation that we wanted to have, further discussion that you all wanted to think about. There is a couple of ways to go about this. There is line by line, line item review, or we can jump to any of these sections, and we can call it out by line, that you all would be interested in modifying, and then that is up to you all to agree to what you would want to present forward. And then I guess we have our public hearing on that matter after this discussion. So I'll stop there.
Okay, yeah, I think last time we were discussing, it was a few items that we were just kind of, we had questions on, and I know one of which was the, yes, the foreclosed property registration fee.
Right.
One was the residential vacant building registration, those annual fees and those fees there. And I think, let me make sure.
Developer fee.
Oh, yes, the developer fee, that was that you were entertaining, and we were potentially adding another item to formulate it under our preliminary versus final. And so I think we still have the appetite to delineate those two things there.
Okay. Yeah, so in order, I guess, if you're following along on page 71 of the special meeting packet, however you want to look at it, the foreclosed property registration has been $1,000. Our recommendation was to move that down to $100. Please note that our plan was $100 to be in the same level as residential vacant building registration. So if I could flip-flop the order, and we decide if we're going to do, what we want to do with residential vacant building registration, our recommendation is to have those be the same amount. So if there's no change in the registration vacant, then I would recommend that mirror that number.
Of course. Council, what's your appetite for the residential vacant building registration fees? What are our thoughts in?
So to repeat those, that is on page 72 of the big.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
That's okay, I lost my place.
Yeah, so if we look at all that as one kind of collective, there's the residential vacant building registration that is currently $200. The proposal was to reduce that to 100. The next piece was the residential vacant building annual fee. In that, there's a chart that moves based off of years, it is an escalator rate. The recommendation was to remove the escalator and go to a $100 fee, so everything's 100. Then there's a non-residential vacant building fee that was 500, to reduce to 250. Again, there's an escalator building annual fee that has been struck through and making everything 250. And then the complete elimination of non-residential vacant lot annual fees, that was 10 cents per square foot, or $500. Yep, whichever is greater, to eliminate that. So residential, non-residential vacant buildings, and non-residential vacant lots.
What was the thought behind taking the escalator off?
One other, if, yeah, we had a, well, we, there was some level of constitutionality we were associated with, which is where we got the legal opinion. I think Jake's intention was to try and create a disincentive to having houses vacant, but a fee can only be charged, and Ashley can probably chime in on that, relative to the cost it takes to implement it. And at some level, you know, it was kind of my sense that, like, it seemed, there's nothing illegal about keeping a house vacant. I recognize, you know, forgetting about the externalities of that. You have all kinds of other rules that you can implement to keep the house in order, grass cut, weeds down, da-da-da-da-da. You don't have to necessarily charge for vacancy, although if you want to maintain a list, that, you know, is where I think where we kind of landed. So listen, but you can't charge any more than it costs you to implement the rule. Does that make sense? I don't know, but that's where we kind of landed with that whole thing.
No, I see what you're trying to say.
Yeah, all fees have to be reasonable, so they have to be proportionately related to the, while you're charging the fee, you have to relate it to, like, whatever administrative costs that we have in terms of staffing, oversight, those things. So that's up to, you know, it just kind of pans out however it is, as long as it's reasonable, related to the cost of administering the program.
Right.
And on the subject of the foreclosure, I'm not sure how it ever got to $1,000, but, because that just doesn't seem like normal, does it?
Had that ever been implemented?
Implementation, I'd have to think about it, but that number was, like, three years ago, it was a lot lower than that. When all of these others were added, that also tracked higher too. So this section is good to be talked about collectively, I think.
I guess it depends on what our goal is pertaining to the resident, to the vacant, like, what is our goal as a city, and that determines the fee. So if, and again, I can think of, when I ride around, there's several properties that I see that are just vacant, blighted, you know, and so I, but I associate vacant with blight, so.
Yeah, sometimes that's not the case.
Well, I think, but more often than not, it is, and I think if we're in the business as a city to cite, we're not going to cite a vacant, you know, perfectly maintained home. I wish our director of housing was here, but I don't think, I don't think the city's into, you know, if a person has a completely vacant home that is maintained properly, everything is, oh, well, we're not going to just slap a fine on that. But if someone has a blighted house, and for years upon years, that home has not been, you know, maintained, then that's where we have to step in as a city to make sure that we're doing our due diligence, you know?
Yeah, so the only thing is just, you know, summarize it, there is, should there be an escalator? That is a philosophy. And then should there be a reduction in the fees? So you can put them together, you can separate those out, but we've combined both of those ideas into our proposal. So there's as-is, there is one or the other, or however you want to do it. You have a little bit of flexibility, but, and then probably what you do for one, you probably carry through on the others.
Our last discussion of this at the work session was we were to get some feedback in regards to the cost for mowing the lawns, for the police showing up, for, you know, the things that we go out and attend to. And what that trend was, I think we just said in the last 12 months. As far as I know, we haven't gotten any. I can see where we would eliminate the escalator issue, but I would really like us to consider, and going back to the vacant building registration, to the $200.
Yeah, just, like I said, I go back to what is our goal, and again, we're holding, if we hold, we have, we're holding all of our property owners to the same level, and it's, again, I think in our mind, we're not saying it just to, but a blighted building or a blighted residence, or residence is not maintained properly, we need to have some sort of diligence to maintain that and to be able to cite the individual, the homeowner, to say, hey, listen, you know, this is not, you know, we, there's a reasonable expectation to your property. And again, it's not us, you know, I don't, I think the $200 wasn't even a reach, but we, I think, just reducing that is not, is not kind of jiving what I think our goal is as a city to, and again, we want those, we don't want vacant, we just talked about homelessness, now we have vacant properties. I don't see why that's, so it's.
Well, my understanding, it's only like 54 in the city, that's according to MIR, which is 54, but it's out of like 8,000, so it's not, you know, not a block after block situation. But I guess a lot was really, and I think what Andy and I were trying to accomplish was, it's reasonable to assess, if you're going to maintain a list of 50 homes, is that a $5,000 annual conversation? Yeah, who knows? I mean, I think it's really hard to find, you know, you got to fill out a form, you mail it in, they put you on a list, you know, it's basically the end of it. But that's independent of the escalator, the escalator just doesn't, that's, to me, if there's problems beyond that, then that's the other part of the code's issue. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I can see that, I can. Yeah, I can see that. I can, I can see, taking the escalator piece out, I can, I can see that. I just, I think the incentive to get properties up to code, livable, to take away the fact that we have to go out and mow their lawns and, you know, so on and so forth. And it does, yeah, and policing. I think I would like to see it back at the original cost or the original amount of two hundred dollars with the understanding that the escalator piece come out.
Okay. Just for clarification, taking the escalator fee out, we still need to identify a residential vacant building annual fee. Because there's the registration and there's the annual fee. So if you take out the escalator, which is fine, you still need to come up with a number. If you note from ours, we had our number as the same as the registration fee. So you would have to insert a number there.
So what is a, see, the two hundred was the previous. Is that, this was last fiscal year, correct? Can you think back to, like, has this been a consistent numerical value there, that two hundred?
I, it might have gone up. I, the two hundred I'm good with. I could even argue the annual fee if we're going to, because if you look at year one.
Right.
It was two hundred, so I would, if you're not going to, if it's not going to go up escalator, I would have two hundred, two hundred for those two things and the same as you get into the next section of this.
Counsel?
Yes.
Yes, let's do that. Okay. And we're going to mimic the same fee for the foreclosure fee? So it's going to be two hundred is going to match that as well versus the one thousand? Is that what you were saying, the two?
That would be my recommendation.
Counsel?
If that's, if we're going to two hundred, yes, then that would.
I think last time, it was Mier said that it was four hundred was on the high end for comparable municipalities. Four hundred was on the high end. So I think two hundred is a good mid-range number.
I can concur.
Two.
Yeah.
Two.
Two hundred for that one as well. Okay, what were the other, I'm trying to keep myself.
Then you have to do the non-residential vacant building, residential vacant lot registration. That was the five hundred reduced to two fifty. I just, I don't want to read between the lines with what you're suggesting, but it sounds like you want to keep it as-is.
Keep it as-is without the escalators. I think that's what.
Okay. And then the only other one is a non-residential vacant lot annual fee. It would be, we, we had, there's no escalator, it was just a, it would go back to what it was, which.
Yeah, that really troubles me because there is no house there. It's like, you know, it's really funny.
So what is?
Vacant lots.
I guess it was a question of what, how would, have we ever cited before, huh?
It's just a lot that doesn't have anything on it. And if it's vacant, meaning it's not buildable, we haven't built on it, we want to charge you for.
As long as it's groomed.
That's what I'm saying, as long as they cut their own grass. Well, they charge for that separately anyway. If they come out and cut your grass, they'll charge you.
I think one of the.
As long as the person has the lot, the lot is properly well-cap, it shouldn't be a problem.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think original thought was, you know, if there's opportunities for infill, if you have a vacant piece of property, you're preventing the opportunity for, or you should be trying to develop it, improve it.
Yeah, we can't, okay.
That's what I'm saying.
Let's, okay, I got you. What do we, can we just strike that? Let's strike that. I don't think that.
I don't think that's, I mean, I.
You don't have to say anymore. Strike it from. Oh, man. I'm going to snapshot Andy's face sometime just.
Less is more.
Zoom, the Zoom times were good.
All right. All right. I think we were scrolling down, was it development plan review or was it?
Yes, that's where I wanted to, just.
Sure, that's page seventy-eight in the packet. I think three thousand is served, but there is flexibility there and we can kind of go from there to see how much. And like, we can actually start tracking hours a little bit more to really try to get a better equi, I, and then we can, if we think after this next year.
Sure.
That we're really under, under.
Just three thousand is.
Okay.
That's, that's on the upper. But again, like I said, for three thousand, your turnaround time and you're, you've got to have.
We don't have the staff.
We do not to, so that's Chick-fil-A prices for McDonald's. No, I shouldn't say that. But I'm just saying, for that expectation, it's going to be the service time, the call volume, the email.
I think we, the way I got it, so you understand the language, P one, P two, P three. So we were saying the three thousand would get you through a regular review process to like a final.
The whole.
It would get you all the way to the final. The issue, the extra thousand that's listed in there is, if you're now in four and five and six and seven, because you keep messing with us and keep changing things, then we were going to have to do it just, because we've had five and six, seven, eight reviews.
And that's where I think you should have two line items. If you can charge, again, for preliminary, for final, that way, you know, your initial would get you there, but for final, if it's, if you're constantly bugging, you know, and you're having that level of service there, you know, we're able to charge, you know, someone more.
So what we could do is, I mean, if you reduce that initial gate and if we see that this is being taxing and a lot of back and forth, we typically have not done the additional assessment charge, but we could probably be a little bit more
Okay.
strict with, hey, if you're not giving us completed work every time and wasting time, then we may be a little bit more.
Charge more.
Right, so the initial gate could be lower. Or, I mean, it's up to you.
Or keep it as-is, but just be more mindful to charge the additional fifty or.
Five hundred, what it was?
Five hundred, a thousand.
Well, yeah, we moved from five to thousand. It's.
Counsel? This is page twelve of the fee schedule or what? I'm sorry, I'm looking at.
It's seventy-eight of the bigger.
Oh, yes, yes. I have it saved. I'm sorry, I'm, I'm. What's the, what's the appetite from counsel? Do we want to keep it at the three thousand or do we want to reduce it?
Reduce. Go back to the, I would say go back to the thousand.
Do you want to meet, go to the middle?
I like middle.
A thousand is. Yeah, meet in the middle, sure.
Thousand is super low. And I mean, considering we're short-staffed.
I would say meet in the middle at the two.
I see your fifteen hundred, raise you five hundred.
Yes. Go to the two. And then, so, and then your additional is a five hundred every.
So we can, if we go to two, then we can make that thousand, stay at five and then just. And again, we can do a full analysis review and see really what we're at with these reviews. And then if we think we're still being short-changed next year, I think we will be, we can at least give you very concrete, longitudinal data that says like, look, we're not, we're still under the market. I think the second line in that we need to do from the outsourcing, because that's the number that we got from our third-party.
Yes, that's fine.
Okay.
Okay.
So two and five hundred. Just keep it at five?
I thought we were keeping it at a thousand.
Okay.
I, I need to.
Yes.
Two and a thousand?
Yes.
Okay, two and a thousand.
One once.
Yes, okay.
Was there another item?
That was what I remember from last time. Any other?
Yeah, I think that.
That was it. It was like the VHS fee, no. I think, I think that was, I think that brought it there. So you have all that documented, you're good on that?
Yeah, I've got everything. I just, I'm looking at Kim and Ashley on what the procedure would be. Now that we have.
Yeah.
Because we have that, I don't know, like, we have supposed to have a public hearing in a couple of minutes. Is it based off of the modified budget session we just talked about? Is it, I don't know, we're presenting, I don't know what we're allowed to have.
That's, that's what I was talking to her about, because I was like, we're just getting, we're going to get ready to go into special session and so, or I think we should have it presented as what you guys are just deciding upon now, right? Not what's presented in.
That was my, that was my.
You'd read it as modified?
Yes.
Okay, or as, as, okay. With, so not only all the other previous changes, but also these recommendations inclusive of those. I think that would make the most sense, but.
Kind to, who's keeping notes on all of this? Because I can articulate those or I can defer to you when it comes to the presentation of this ordinance and you can highlight that, summarize the changes that have just been made here today. Could we do that?
Yeah, I, yeah, were you going to read each change?
No, I was just going to refer to what was in the agenda packet. And then I think at that point, I can defer to you to articulate what was just discussed today and agreed upon, which would be as modified.
Got it.
Okay.
Okay. And with that, I will, are we all, we're buttoned up? Good. I will, I'll call the special meeting to order. Can I have a motion in a second to adopt this special meeting agenda?
Second.
All those in favor of adopting this special meeting agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the chair votes aye. All right, so. Can I have a motion in a second to approve resolution number three, three, four, zero?
Second. Forty-eight.
Four, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I can have a motion in a second to approve resolution number three, three, four, eight.
So moved. Second.
Thank you.
Sorry.
It's dinner time. Yes. Okay.
This is a twenty-one-page resolution. I'm not reading the entire thing. So I'm going to read a part of it and then there's a summary, the summary of the bond resolution, which will follow up when I do the header. So I just want to preface that. Resolution number three, three, four, eight.
Check, check.
I didn't think it was vibrating. Start that again.
I love being hacked.
All right, this is resolution three, three, four, eight. I'm going to read the summary and then the summary of the bond resolution. A resolution of the council of the city of Salisbury authorizing the city of Salisbury to issue and sell a series of its general obligation bonds in an original aggregate principal amount not to exceed thirteen million, two hundred and ten thousand pursuant to the authority described herein. Such series of bonds to be designated City of Salisbury Public Improvement Bonds of two thousand and twenty-four. The proceeds of the sale thereof to be used and applied for the public purposes as provided herein or financing or reimbursing costs of certain projects described herein and related costs to that are authorized by ordinance number two, eight, six, four identified herein. All as further described herein, prescribing the form and the tenor of the bonds and the terms and conditions for the issuance and sell therefore a public sale by solicitation of a competitive bids, including the substantial final form of the notice of sale of the other details incidents to the issuance sale and delivery of the bonds, authorizing the mayor to determine certain matters provided for herein in connection with the sale of the bonds, authorizing and approving the preparation and distribution of a preliminary and final official statement in connection with the sale of the bonds and any supplements or amendments thereto designated a bond registrar and paying agent for the bonds and providing for an agreement with such entity, authorizing the preparation, execution and delivery of the continuing disclosure undertaken pursuant to section rule fifteen C two dash twelve and conveying the provide, the provide continuing disclosure relating to the bonds, providing for the appropriation, disbursement and investment, other proceeds of the bonds, providing for the imposition of any taxes necessary for the payment of debt service on the bonds, pledging the full faith and credit and unlimited taxing power of the city to the payment of such debt service, providing that the debt service on the bonds also may be provided for any other lawful available source of revenue-making or providing for certain covenants, terminations and designations relevant to the tax-exempt status of the bonds, authorizing certain city personnel to take certain actions in connection with the bonds, providing certain rules of construction, providing that the provisions of this resolution shall be liberally construed and generally relating to the issuance, sale, delivery and payment and and for the bonds. Now, the summary of the bond resolution. The recitals trace the authority for and purpose of the consummated bonds therefore to in the resolution as the bonds. Section one, it contains the rules of construction. Section two allocates the maximum principal amount of the bonds among the authorized projects and the cost of issuance and defines costs of the projects. Also provides for the appropriation of proceeds of the bonds up to the stated maximum principal amounts specified in the table included in subsection B and for the reallocation of proceeds of bonds as described in such section. Section three designates the bonds as the City of Salisbury Public Improvement Bonds of two thousand and twenty-four and specifies that they may be issued in the maximum aggregate principal not to exceed thirteen million, two hundred and ten thousand. Contains further appropriation allocation of language. Section four, one provides the bonds will be issued in book entry only form with the depository trust company, DTC. Two sets forth the preliminary amortization schedule with an assumed original aggregate principal amount of eleven million, nine hundred thousand dollars and a final maturity date of September one, two thousand and thirty-nine and authorizes the mayor with the full advice, excuse me, with the advice of certain personnel to adjust the amortization schedule from time to time prior to the sale, including by adjusting the overall principal amount, eliminating maturities and or changing the serial structure for the reason specified in such section, as long as the final aggregate principal amount does not exceed thirteen million, two hundred and ten thousand dollars. Specifies interest payment dates of March first and September first commencing March first, two thousand and twenty-five and principal payment dates of September first, subject to further adjustments as described in section four. Section five, subject to the provisions of section four G, which, excuse me, four G, the bonds maturing on or after September first, two thousand and thirty-five will be subject to redemption at the option of the city in whole or in part on any date on or after September first, two thousand and thirty-four at a price of par plus accrued interest. The rest of section five contains standard provisions for the mechanics of redemption of the bonds at city options. The resolution contains standard provisions. This, the resolution contains standard provisions regarding registration of the bonds in a book entry only form with DTC, the authorized denominations of the bonds and the manner of the payment of the bonds and provisions relating to the transfer or exchange of bonds. That's in sections four A, six and seven. Section eight, the substantial form of the bonds is attached as exhibit A to the resolution and the mayor and authorized, and the mayor is authorized to approve the final form of the bonds. Section nine, the determination is made to sell the bonds by public sale at competitive bid to the successful bidder determined in accordance with the official notice of sale, the substantial final form, which is exhibit B to this resolution. Provisions for dissemination of the notice of sale set forth in the resolution. Sale is currently scheduled for June eleventh, two thousand and twenty-four and will be conducted through an online electronic platform known as BID comp slash party slash www.idoprospectus.com. The mayor, with the advice of certain personnel, is authorized to make changes to the notice of sale pre and post release of the preliminary office official statement, excuse me, including determining to postpone the sale date and reschedule. If sale is postponed, the dated date, maturity dates and the optional redemption dates featured for the bonds may be changed. The mayor may reject all bids for the bonds or make a ward of the bonds, which will be done by order filing a receipt of good faith deposit provided for in the notice of sale. Section ten, the preparation and distribution of the preliminary official statement in such form as, as may be approved by the mayor and the director of finances authorized. The mayor and the director of finance are authorized to approve final official statement and any necessary supplements or amendments to either the preliminary or final official statements. Section eleven A, the selection of manufacturers and trade trust company as bond registrar and paying agent for the bonds is provided for and the mayor is authorized to execute an agreement with such entity. Section twelve, the city agrees to deliver continuing disclosure undertaken in connection with the bonds as required by SEC rule fifteen C two dash twelve and to comply with the provisions of such undertaking while the bonds are outstanding. The mayor is authorized, excuse me, and the mayor is authorized to approve and execute such continuing disclosure undertaking. Sections eleven B, thirteen and fourteen provide for the mechanics of payment of debt service on the bonds, undertaking the closing on the bonds and receipt and application of proceeds of the bonds. Section fifteen, the city's full faith and credit and unlimited taxing power are pledged to payment of the bonds and the city agrees to impose necessary property taxes to pay the bonds, provided that, to the extent other monies are lawfully available to pay debt service on the bonds, the taxes otherwise required to be levied will be reduced proportionately. Section sixteen, any one or more of the mayor, the city administrator and the director of finance are authorized to execute and deliver at closing the tax certificate addressing certain covenants and representations regarding the tax exempt status of the bonds and the city covenants to comply with the applicable federal tax code requirements. Section seventeen, details how references in the resolution to certain officials by the title shall be construed if any such position is vacant or in the absence, disability, unavailability of the reference official. Also addresses certain modes of signature. Also addresses certain modes of signature. Section eighteen overrides the city's debt policy to the extent the provision of the resolution or the bonds do not comport with the debt policy. Section nineteen, the provisions of the resolution shall be liberally construed in order to effectuate the contemplated transactions. Section twenty, the resolution will be effectively immediately, will be effective immediately upon the adoption by the council and its approval by the mayor, and is not subject to referendum. And then, as I mentioned, exhibit A is a substantial final form of the bond, and exhibit B is a substantial final form of the notice of sale.
Would you like me to do anything else?
All those in favor of resolution number three-three-four-eight, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the chair votes aye. Thank you. Yes, yeah, yeah, I did. All right. Thank you, Mr. Kitzrow. And now we'll have Ms. Boucher.
Is that unanimously passed?
Yes. All right.
So we're ready for our first public hearing. We're going to have the hearing on ordinance number twenty-eight-seventy. This is an ordinance appropriating the necessary funds for the operation of the government and administration of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, for the period July one, twenty twenty-four, to June thirty, twenty twenty-five, establishing the levy for the general fund for the same fiscal period, and establishing the appropriation for the water, sewer, parking authority, city marina, and stormwater funds. And at this point, we'd open it up for a public comment, anyone wishing to speak. Ms. Nichols, I think we should do it for, have a comment for each separate ordinance, correct? So I will defer to anybody wanting to speak on this topic.
So I'll now open the public hearing on ordinance number twenty-eight-seven-zero. Seeing no one wishing to speak, the public hearing on ordinance number two-eight-seven-zero is now closed.
Are we ready to move forward to the next one?
Yes.
One moment, please, okay. We now have a public hearing on ordinance number twenty-eight-seventy-one. This is an ordinance of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, to amend water and sewer rates to increase rates by nine percent, and making said changes effective for all bills dated October one, twenty twenty-four, and thereafter, unless and until subsequently revised or changed. And so, at this point, if you want to swear anyone wanting to speak?
I'll now open the public hearing on ordinance number two-eight-seven-two.
Two-eight-seven-one.
Seven-one. Seeing no one wishing to speak, the public hearing on ordinance number two-eight-seven-one is now closed.
Moving on to the public hearing for ordinance number twenty-eight-seven-D-two. This is an ordinance of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, to set fees for F Y twenty-twenty-five, and thereafter, unless and until subsequently revised or changed. And this one, I think we should just do slightly differently than the others, because we were moving forward with, as presented on the agenda, and given the budget meeting, special meeting that we had before this, there have been a couple of changes, so if Mr. Kitzrow could highlight those.
Yes, in the packet on our fee schedule, page six, one of the first changes was, excuse me, on page, I want to go in order. On page five of the fee schedule, the foreclosed property registration fee was changed to two hundred dollars, reduced from one thousand to two hundred dollars. On page six, the residential vacant building registration was not reduced, it remains at two hundred dollars. The vacant, residential vacant building annual fee has been set at two hundred dollars. The elimination of the escalator fee remains eliminated. Non-residential vacant building and non-residential vacant lot registration remains at five hundred dollars, it does not change to two fifty. Non-residential vacant building annual fee is five hundred dollars, it is not reduced to two fifty. And the escalator of the, for that fee has been removed. And finally, non-residential of this section, non-residential vacant lot annual fees continues to stay removed, no change there. On page... Twelve in the fee schedule, fee for review of development plans is changed from one thousand dollars to two thousand dollars. And I believe that is, that is it.
I'll now open the public hearing on ordinance number two-eight-seven-two. Seeing none wishing to speak, the public hearing on ordinance number two-eight-seven-two is now closed. Can have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number two-eight-six-nine for second reading.
So moved, second.
Ordinance number twenty-eight-sixty-nine, this is an ordinance of the City of Salisbury authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with the Chesapeake Bay Trust for the purpose of accepting grant funds in the amount of one thousand, two-hundred-and-seventy-two dollars, and to approve a budget amendment to the grant fund to appropriate these funds for the Salisbury Edible Community Garden. As you mentioned, this is before you for second reading, no changes or amendments since first.
All those in favor of ordinance number two-two-eight-seven, two-eight-six-nine for second reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the chair votes aye. Can have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number two-eight-seven-three for second reading.
So moved, second.
Ordinance number twenty-eight-seventy-three, this is an ordinance of the City of Salisbury approving a budget amendment of the F Y twenty-twenty-four general fund budget to appropriate funds to the Salisbury Fire Department's operating budget. Again, before you for second reading, no changes or amendments.
All those in favor of ordinance number two-eight-seven-three for second reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the chair votes aye. Can have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number two-eight-seven-four for second reading.
So moved, second.
Ordinance number twenty-eight-seventy-four, an ordinance of the City of Salisbury approving a budget amendment of the F Y twenty-twenty-four general fund budget to appropriate additional funds required for legal services, excuse me. Again, second reading, no changes or amendments.
All those in favor of ordinance number two-eight-seven-four for second reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the chair votes aye. Can have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number two-eight-seven-five...
So moved.
For first reading.
Second.
Ordinance number twenty-eight-seventy-five, an ordinance of the City of Salisbury authorizing the mayor to appropriate funds for various capital projects. Whereas the City of Salisbury has determined capital projects to be funded from bond proceeds would be best funded in the F Y twenty-four bond issue to consolidate planned bond issuances in order to save bond issuance expense. And whereas section three of ordinance twenty-eight-sixty-five incorrectly included appropriations for projects previously approved in ordinance twenty-eight-oh-two, and consequently must be stricken or removed. And whereas those projects will be stricken, or, those projects that will be stricken are removed, are set forth in section two below, and the correct projects added as set forth in section three below. And whereas the appropriations necessary as set forth herein must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and the approval of forfeits of the council of the City of Salisbury. Section one of ordinance twenty-eight-seventy-five reads that the mayor is hereby authorized to appropriate funds for the projects listed in section two and section three below. Section two, the City of Salisbury's water, sewer, capital project fund budget being hereby amended as follows. Account nine-six-one-two-four-dash-five-one-three-zero-two-six, TBD, restore Parkwell Field, decrease in the amount of one hundred and seventy-five thousand. Account nine-six-one-two-four-five-one-three-zero-two-six, TBD, to restore the Paleo well field, this is decreased by two hundred and seventeen thousand. Account number nine-six-one-two-four-dash-five-one-three-zero-two-six, TBD, the W W T P electrical upgrades, this is decreased by one point, one million, sixty thousand, four hundred ninety-three, so that's one point, zero-six-zero-point-four-nine-three. Account number nine-six-one-two-four-five-one-three-zero-two-six, TBD, the Parkwell Field raw water main and valve replacement decreased by eight hundred and seventy-five thousand. Account nine-six-one-two-four-five-one-three-zero-two-six, TBD, the Glen Avenue lift station decreased by seven hundred and fifty thousand. Nine-six, account number nine-six-one-two-four-five-one-three-zero-two-six, TBD, the W W T P outfall inspection and repairs decreased by five hundred thousand. The same account number, I won't read it again, the South pump station force main decreased by four hundred and ninety-four thousand. Moving on to account, this is a different number, nine-six-one-two-one-four-five-eight-eight-nine-zero-zero, this is issuance cost decreased by one hundred and forty-one thousand, two hundred and three dollars. Section three, the City of Salisbury's water, sewer, capital project fund budget is hereby amended as follows. Account number nine-six-one-two-four-five-one-three-zero-two-six, TBD, the Parkwell Field increased by five hundred and fifty thousand. Same account number for the Parkwell two increased by three hundred and fifty thousand. Same account for the solid waste disposal increased by eight hundred and ten thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. Same account, once again, the south side pump station force main increased by two hundred and ninety-five thousand. And then account number nine-six-one-two-one-four-five-eight-eight-nine-zero-zero, issuance cost, we are increasing that by one hundred and forty-one thousand, two hundred and three dollars.
All those in favor of ordinance number two-eight-seven-five for first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the chair votes aye. Can have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number two-two-eight-seven-six for first reading.
So moved, second.
Ordinance number twenty-eight-seventy-six, an ordinance of the City of Salisbury authorizing a budget amendment to appropriate funds for the W T P filter project, whereas the Department of Water Works is preparing for the design of granular activated carbon referred to as G A C filters at the Paleo Water Plant to remove PFOS from the city's drinking waters and to meet the upcoming PFOS regulations. Whereas the City of Salisbury has determined an additional four hundred and seventy-two thousand is needed to complete the G A C filter design, and whereas the City of Salisbury has three hundred and forty-two thousand, seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars in account number eight-two-zero-seven-five-dash-five-four-six-zero-zero-four, water treatment plant chemicals, and one hundred and twenty thousand in project account number nine-six-one-two-four-five-one-three-zero-two-six-dash-five-zero-zero-four-nine for the Paleo Equalization Basin, both of which are immediately available to transfer to the water, sewer, capital project funds for the W T P filter replacement project. Whereas the appropriations necessary to execute this budget amendment as provided herein must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and the approval of forfeits of the council. Section one of ordinance twenty-eight-seventy-six reads that the mayor is hereby authorized to appropriate the aforementioned additional funds for the W T P filter replacement project in the cumulative amount of four hundred and sixty-two thousand, seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars. Section two of the ordinance, the City of Salisbury's F Y twenty-four water sewer fund budget hereby amended as follows. Decreased expense for account eight-two-zero-seven-five-dash-five-four-six-zero-zero-four for account description, water treatment plant operating chemicals, and the amount of three hundred and forty-two thousand, seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars, and then increased expense for account nine-one-zero-zero-two-dash-five-nine-nine-one-zero-eight, transfer water, sewer, capital projects by that same amount, which is three hundred and forty-two thousand, seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars. Section three, the City of Salisbury's water, sewer, capital fund budget is hereby amended as follows. Decreased revenue for the project description Paleo Equalization Basin, account number nine-six-zero-two-four-four-six-nine-three-one-three-dash-five-zero-zero-four-nine for transfer water, sewer, capital projects, in the amount of one hundred and twenty thousand. Decreased expense for the same project description, this account number is nine-six-one-two-four-five-one-three-zero-two-six-dash-five-zero-zero-four-nine for construction by that same amount, one hundred and twenty thousand. Increased expense for the filter replacement project, account number nine-six-zero-two-four-four-six-nine-three-one-three-five-zero-zero-four-three for transfer water, sewer, capital projects in the amount of four hundred and sixty-two thousand, seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars, and then increasing expense for that same project, account number nine-six-one-two-four-five-one-three-zero-two-zero-five-zero-zero-four-three for engineering by that same amount, which is four hundred and sixty-two thousand, seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars.
All those in favor of ordinance number two-eight-seven-six for first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the chair votes aye. And at this time, the special meeting is now adjourned.